Hello, Kyle. Mayor Farnie Ball?
Here.
Vice Mayor Bill Kausner?
Here.
Alderman John Bad? Alderman Freddie Gray?
Here.
Alderwoman Kathy Ho?
Here.
Alderman Tim Morgan?
Here.
City Attorney Terry Hurst?
Here.
City Administrator Scott Collins?
Here.
Thank you. First item of business is approval of many to the previous meetings. The first one is a special call meeting on May the 3rd, 2011. We have a motion to approve. I'll make the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes, no. The second item under that section is the regular session made the 10th, 2011. We have a motion to approve. I'll make the motion. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes, no. Item C is special call meeting made the 31st, 2011. We have a motion to approve. I'll make that motion. Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes, no. Here now. Next item of business would be to... What representative here from Animal Shelter?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Would you come forward, please? This is a certificate from the Ether Senior Work Program. And we do have... How many people we got who works at the one or two? Through the Ether Senior Program?
One, I think.
Okay. And a couple of weeks ago, I attended a meeting. And the Newport Animal Shelter received a certificate for being an outstanding host agency.
Agreed.
And that's great news, and congratulations.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. We have a certificate here of recognition. This is going to be awarded to Austin Cobble if he'd come forward. I guess most people read in the newspaper about the near drowning incident that happened at the city park. And on behalf of the Newport Board of Mayor and Alderman, we'd like to present you with this certificate of recognition for an outstanding job. Thank you. You're welcome. Next item is correspondence from before from Scott Collins, City Administrator.
Mayor, boy, Alderman, we do have the reports on file. If you have any questions regarding the end of the... Couple of announcements to make. The work on the River Walk is progressing very nicely. A lot of progress has been made within the last... Past two weeks. And I hope that it'll be finishing up the financial reconciliation segment of it in the coming couple of weeks. Another item of interest is we will have a tenants' meeting with the Tanner Cultural Center's tenants on Thursday, June 23rd, here at City Hall to discuss the reopening of the Tanner Cultural Center. So all the tenants and interested parties are being contacted and invited. And of course, all the members of the Board of Mayor and Alderman invited. Twelve noon. We scheduled it for 12 noon. Because a lot of these people are working and have other activities that we hope to work it in as a lunch hour. That's all I have to report at this time.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Nothing under complaints to boards?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I do apologize, though. There is two additions. One of them we discussed... Or both of them we discussed last night at the workshop. But we'd like to ask the council to please consider suspending the rules and add two items to the agenda. The first being consideration of design contract with the Rose and Associates Incorporated for the diabetes grant for a professional service fee of 7.5 percent of the overall project construction cost. While that's in regard to is the $250,000 American Diabetes Grant that TM is trying to secure to extend the River Walk. A second issue for real consideration would be consideration of resolution 2011-12 proposal from T-DOT for signalization for Broadway and Main Street, which also is the downtown signalization project. And I just need the boards approval so they can progress with that.
Okay. Do we have a motion to suspend the rules for those two items?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes, no. I hear that. We'll just go ahead and do the design contract and diabetes grant first. Everyone's aware of what he was talking about. Do we have a motion to approve that? I'll make the motion to approve it. Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes, no. I hear that. And the next item would be the resolution for T-DOT on the signalization. Do we have a motion to approve that?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second? I'll say. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposes, no. I hear that. Item A, under new business, first reading ordinance of 2011-05, the digital zoning map.
Mayor, I'll leave the caption of that ordinance into the record. It's ordinance number 2011-05, an ordinance to adopt a new zoning map for the city of Newport, Tennessee, and to rescind all other zoning maps.
Do we have a motion to approve? Did we get a cost on this?
It's through the City State Planning Office. And it's the... The vertical guidance there. And we'll provide us some hard costs. As part of our ongoing...
No cost to us.
No cost.
I'll make a motion.
I'll say. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposes, no. Item B is the first reading of ordinance 2011-06, the Newport Grammar School Budget Amendment.
Mayor, that's ordinance number 2011-06, an ordinance to amend Newport Grammar School's budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2010, and ending June 30, 2011.
Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposes, no. Item C is the first reading of ordinance 2011-07, rezoning 108 and 118 English Street.
And Mayor, that's ordinance number 2011-07, an ordinance to reclassify partial 12, parentheses, 108 English Street, in parentheses, and partial 13, parentheses, 118 English Street, in parentheses, located above the intersection of English Street and Cosby Highway from R1, parentheses, low-density residential, in parentheses, to C-2, parentheses, general business, in parentheses, within the corporate boundaries of Newport, Tennessee.
Okay, of course, this is the first reading of each of these three ordinances that we've read. And the next council meeting will be a second reading and a public hearing for any discussion concerning any of these three during that public hearing. Do we have a motion to approve?
Question.
Yes.
Is this the same one we went through two years ago, three years ago? The same rezon?
It's the same general area. It may be the same property.
Same two pieces of property.
Yes. Why would they want to rezon? They're wanting to put a business there.
Is anybody here that's part of the rezoning? What about... What about the people that own the property that want it rezoned?
Leon, why, I don't know who's it?
No, Leon sold it.
He sold it?
I understand Leon doesn't own it anymore.
Manning, Subicu. Owns it. It's been before the planning commission on a couple of occasions, but...
What about his bought zone? Is he skipping the property and going to the next one? And don't join it?
Because the Martin property has a lifetime boundary, is my understanding. And it would be... You'd have to skip that property in order to do it.
No, you wouldn't have to skip it. I mean, you could, but you wouldn't have to. I don't think they intend to skip it. I mean, I'm not... I wasn't there, and I think it's too... Mark's not here. Well, that affects their tax base, and it'll raise their tax base. Because commercial's on 5 percent, and the sales gets on...
It doesn't, unless they put a business in it, does it?
Unless you put a business in it. Have to put a business in it.
And that's what they intend to do, isn't it, the Subicu's? They intend to put a business there.
Yeah, but it wouldn't increase these ladies' pay rate.
But I do recall Manning, at the planning commission meeting that I attended when it was discussed, he didn't want to do anything that was going to upset any of the neighbors, a statement that he made at the planning commission. So when we have the second reading and the... Before the second reading, there'll be a public hearing. And I'm sure Mark will be here.
If he made the statement that he wants Don to upset any of the neighbors, the neighbors that own the property next to it are here.
And they're unhappy.
So I'd say it'll probably... If that statement continues to be his position, then, yeah. It'd be a moot point. But it would probably be good to have him be on the second reading to make that same statement before council, or they did before the planning commission.
When you vote, then you need to give...
Well, we're just passing it on the first reading. And then the second reading's when we'll have the public hearing where everybody can voice their opinion.
Of course, this has come from the recommendation of the planning commission.
Yes.
I wasn't there, but they did recommend it.
Did we vote on that? Did we have a motion on that in a second?
No.
Okay.
Did they recommend it be rezoned, too?
Yes, ma'am. I mean, that's why it's here, because they recommended it. That may be. So I can stand corrected.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes?
May I make the suggestion that we simply table this on the first reading until Mark Robinson is present and can give us a detail of your board on it?
Okay, so we can possibly do the first reading at the next council meeting? Okay, that'll be fine.
We'll just take no action.
Just take no action.
We're out there. I don't think yet that somebody wants to make a motion.
You don't have to make a motion, do you?
No.
If we're not going to do anything, we're going to see to it now.
Exactly.
Well, there's a difference in tabling stuff, which makes it much more difficult to do if you table it. So if we just do nothing, then nothing's done.
So we're just doing nothing?
Unless somebody wants to make a motion on it, to do something.
Does anybody want to make a motion to table it or to approve it?
Well, I keep going back to the comment that this guy has made, that if it's going to upset the neighbors, then don't approve it. So I'll make a motion that we're not approving the resolutions.
Okay.
I'll say.
And we got a second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposes, no? Done deal. Item B's resolution, 2011-08, the Cosby Substation Property. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion, ma'am.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposes, no? Item E's resolution, 2011-09, continuing budget for the fiscal year 2010, 2011. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second, okay? Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposes, no? Item F is resolution 2011-10, Safety Grant. Do we have a motion to approve? I'll make the motion. Do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposes, no? Item G is resolution 2011-11, Review of Plan of Services. Do we have a motion?
Yes, I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposes, no? Item M's, Consideration of Health Insurance Rates for Fiscal Year 2011-2012. Any discussion or motion?
I'll make a motion to accept it.
Okay.
It's at zero. I make the motion to accept it.
Second.
Sit down.
Any discussion?
She wants that five seconds appeal time right there.
There's another part.
What's that? I'll make the motion. It's not the little...
You actually got a road deed brief. As you see, in your packets, it's included two recommendations. One is to maintain the current health code with blue cross, because it did not change. The second is a recommendation to actually change the life and disability package from the Hartford to Blue Cross. It represented a savings of approximately $5,800 a year. We still maintain the integrity of our current benefit elections, and we got a lower premium. And we'll have some additional options available to the employees for the settlement of life. So that's the recommendation that we actually make that change in the life and disability package from the Hartford to Blue Cross as well.
Now, wait on Dave.
We are here to...
Do you want to amend it from the...
I will do.
To include that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Include the health insurance in my motion.
Does everybody understand his motion, life insurance? We have a second.
Say hi.
We have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposes, no?
Sammy, thank you for all the hard work y'all did. I know we asked y'all for a lot on that, so appreciate it.
Item M's, Consideration of Authorization of Retirement Request.
Mayor, that's actually approval to use third bucket out.
The third bucket?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
I'll say. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposes, no?
I would like to thank y'all for doing this for me. Not only have I had the surgery party, and I guess the field one out, and I've dealt with my mother, too. And part of this, I really wanted to go back and finish my three months. It wasn't early retirement. It was kind of... I wanted to go back and do my three months. So again, I will be retiring in October anyway. So I do appreciate it. I would like to thank the city of Newport for all it does for me for the last 34 years that I've employed.
Gary, we'd like to thank you, too. And if I can put this in the proper words, you're a great city boy, happy man, and you're an epitome of what a city employee and a firefighter should be. We appreciate your attitude and everything that you give the city of Newport in your years of service. You're a fine person. We did approve that form, didn't we? Okay. That's the most important thing. Okay, item J is discussion of Newport Grammar School expense of $5,000.
Yes, we... Mayor, once we receive some grant reimbursements, we'll be able to handle that.
Okay.
If council so approves.
And then next time this comes up, we need to make...
We'll go ahead and incorporate it into...
Yes.
Upcoming year budget for your approval.
Okay, all right. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second? Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposes, no? And discussion of the consent agenda. Scott mentioned that at the workshop, certain items can be put on the consent agenda. And y'all are familiar with that group. I would recommend that we do that. So do we have a motion? I'll make the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposes, no? Item M's, the roadblock for the Boys and Girls Club.
I'll make the motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposes, no? Item M's, roadblock, Lone Creek Volunteer Fire Department.
I'll make the motion.
I want to say something on behalf of it. During the tornado weekend, they had... They were scheduled to do the roadblock, and they decided with all the things going on inside the city, they would cancel the roadblock. But I appreciate that.
I like you.
I'll second the motion.
Oh, you're fine. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposes, no? Item 10, Bids, Purchases, and Expenses. Item M's, Dump Truck Bids. Have any discussion or motion to accept a bid?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I've given Mr. Hurst a letter to read to council.
Do you want me to read it?
Yes, please.
Glad to. This is from Alderwoman Kathy Ho. It says that on May the 10th, 2011, at a regularly scheduled meeting, the board approved a bid of $77,342 from Moss Motors unanimously for a dump truck for the city street department. For whatever reason, this truck was never ordered, causing a rebid for a dump truck. We now have rebids that resolve in spending at the lowest bid, $15,158.79 more tax money. In my opinion, this is unnecessary and not cost efficient to the taxpayers. At this time, I move to reconsider the previous bids and postpone any action from council tonight. As always, Alderwoman Kathy Ho. So if you want to make a motion, note your need to.
I do make a motion that we postpone this and reconsider the other bids.
Can we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposes, no?
Well, we only had one yes. So we probably...
Let's do a roll call.
I have a question on them. If we're going back to the old bids, the old bid that we had that we approved, can we not make this into her motion to go ahead with that?
Could. City Administrator would have to tell us whether those bids are still valid or not.
I think they are still...
I would need to check the dates on them, but I think there's like a 90-day clause, which chances are they're still valid. But I can't say that with 100% certainty, so...
According to M-TAS, yes, they are.
I guess that motion could be made pending if the bid's still valid. If you want to word it that way.
Word it that way, yeah. And if they ain't, then you just go back and rebid.
Well, still, if we want to go back to the old bids and if we make a motion to approve with those bids, the one that we chose, and we find out it's good, we can order the truck. If we find out it's bad, we got another 30 days to wait before we can ever, right, put an order on the truck.
As far as that, here, there was some discussion about whether the truck was the one that would suit the city. So I think... Is that an issue or not?
Did not make the exact bid specs or something?
I don't think any of them.
None of them, really. And then we did overkill with the T-DOT bid. So perhaps we just need to sit down. We had a good discussion at the TML conference with various officials on the best way to do the bid process, including three M-TAS officials. And they all recommended that we take a step back, like Kathy is saying, review everything, get the truck that we want. Put it out there, and then let the company meet our needs. And you all decide which one you want based on what you want.
I agree with Alderwoman Ho. Sure do. I think we need to let Ben and maybe Kathy sit on the committee, let them sit down, let her represent us the next day or two, and see what they come up with. Which one of the trucks you want? In that way, Ben have his input, and we have our input. Is that a great move? We need to make that form of motion, yeah?
Well, we had a motion and not...
I can rescind my motion.
That Kathy made.
Not to go forward with...
Go forward with these bids that's presented tonight. So we probably need to finish that. And do you think a roll call, please?
We voted on that, didn't we?
Now, let's go and do a roll call.
You're the one who voted yes. I only have a point. Oh, it's possible.
So do a roll call on that motion and second. Alderman Bill Kausner? Kathy, rephrase your motion. I'll make the motion that we postpone doing any action tonight.
Yes.
Alderman Freddie Gray?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kathy Ho? Yes. Alderman Tim Morgan?
Yes.
Yeah, four yeses. Okay. Now, what we at? Comments from citizens?
I remember citizens and what else? People like, I'd like to let y'all know that tomorrow, in conjunction with the Elder Watch program, we're going to be having a paid surrender as well as a information session for elders. Elder abuse is becoming a growing problem. And it's not just people being beaten. And you could also be taken advantage of by family members or strangers as well, taking their finances and stuff away from them. But we use that as an opportunity to do an information session as well for covering any controlled substances or any other prescription medications that anyone wants to surrender to the police department for destruction. And I just want to let y'all know we'll be there from 10:00 until 2:00 tomorrow at the Newport Federal Bank Branch on the Cosby Highway. And in honor of this week being elder abuse remembrance week, the Newport Federal Bank is going to turn their bank purple. So put light in... We should be able to have a purple bank to let everyone know that we are aware that elder abuse is a growing problem. And we do intend to work closely with Elder Watch to make sure that this problem is addressed in our community.
And that's at the Newport Federal on Cosby Highway?
On the highway branch, yes, sir. I don't have to stop nothin', ma'am.
It was purple last night.
So they've been so gracious to work with us and turn their bank purple for awareness and as well as give us the opportunity to use their facilities tomorrow to do our awareness campaign as well as paid surrender. Thank you.
Comments from citizens?
We're also, post y'all on the car show that's been held this weekend at City Park with the Moonshine Rock Band, which will be Friday night. The car show will be Saturday.
Any one else? Yes. Okay, you might need to come to this so that we can have a recording.
I just want to make a comment. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to bid on the opportunity to provide you guys with a dump truck. But as you mentioned earlier, one of the things that while we were going through, including the specs together for a truck, to get it built, it was abundantly clear that the truck was overspec'd and that probably resulted in, and that's one of the increases from legacy bid to bid now, there's probably an added additional cost for a truck than we priced, is probably around $15,000 in real expense. So I'd like to, off my assistance, to use us to help put together a spec we can use, provide you some specs from some other municipalities that we provide trucks for as a guide to go by. Thank you again for giving us that notice.
Thank you. Any other comments? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Anybody against it? Thank y'all for attending.